Buddy, that just arrived. There are agendas on the podium in front. And if you want to sneak in the public comment section, your name, Manuel Luis Forbes, and you can send it up to me. Una vez más para los que van llegando, hay atendas aquí en frente. Y si quieren hablar en el tiempo de comentario público pueden poner su nombre en nuestra public.
Hi, this is Tia over here in City Hall, giving me that call before the meeting actually starts. Recording, so I got that. This is now recording, so.
A call to order, our meeting, which is carried over from the 5th of May. So let's rise and we're going to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to have two roll calls tonight, the first for the meeting of the 5th. Would you please call the roll for us, Ms. Messina?
Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Present.
Alderman Brown.
Yeah.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Hallen.
Here.
Alderman Correto Muniz.
Here.
Alderman Demus.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Here.
You should know, Alderman Birch Ferguson did make a timely request to participate in this meeting remotely. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek.
Here.
Alderman Stout.
Here.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Present.
Alderman Morano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
There. A motion, yes?
I guess, and make a motion to adjourn this meeting as to the related items will be continued at a later time.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're going to call to order the regularly scheduled council meeting of May 19th. And we're going to call the roll again.
Alderman Beebe.
Present.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Present.
Alderman Brown.
Yeah.
Alderman Sheehan.
Here.
Alderman Hallen.
Here.
Alderman Correto Muniz.
Here.
Alderman Demus.
Present.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Switek.
Here.
Alderman Stout.
Here.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Present.
Alderman Morano.
Here.
Alderman Myers.
Here.
Okay. Never been in this position exactly before, but would you guys like to say the pledge of allegiance again for our second meeting? Let's do it again. Honor. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Gives us a chance to think about those words a little bit extra.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we are going to have our time of public participation. And I'm going to read the guidelines. This is the opportunity to speak for the city council. It's provided for those who have a question or a comment on an agenda item or a city of West Chicago issue. The city council appreciates hearing from our residents. Your thoughts and questions are valued. The city council strives to make the best decisions for the city and public input is very helpful. Respect for the duties of the council and for the democratic processes will be adhered to. In this regard, civility and a sense of decorum will be strictly followed. In other words, if someone is in decors, I will ask you to stop. Comments that are personally condescending will not be permitted. Speakers shall be courteous and shall not make statements that are personally disrespectful to members of the city council or city staff. Please use the podium in the center aisle. Please announce your name before commencing. All public comments are going to be limited to three minutes. And each citizen will be permitted to speak only once. It's the city council's policy not to engage in dialogue during public comment. Any questions will be addressed, raised will be addressed by city staff or an elected official outside of the city council meeting. I will have a chance to give my mayoral address and sometimes some of those issues might be addressed in in that moment as well. And I will also say that we are going to provide translation if anyone needs to give their comments in Spanish and we will give them a little bit of grace for time for the translation in which they are not communicating their thoughts. También quiero decir que vamos a proveer traducción si alguien necesita y les daremos este un poco de tiempo extra para el tiempo que requiere la traducción. So first. In random order. Crystal Nolan Riani.
Hello, I'm Crystal Nolan Riani, resident of West Chicago Ward 2 for 16 years. I would like to start off by thanking everyone in attendance tonight for your commitment to the community. It does not go unnoticed. In the 16 years we have lived here, we have seen many changes within our city. One thing is first, one thing is for certain, continuing together the best. We need to continue to unite as a community and be able to inform our residents timely and efficiently. We need the city staff, council, and committee members to be present and willing to have discussions and act on the needs and wants of our wards and city as a whole. Google Forms can be utilized for surveys for asking our residents questions at no great additional cost to residents. I am also here today to support our newly elected mayor and knowing that we stand for his commitment to change within our city government. And I thank you very much for all of your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mateo Suarez.
Hello, good day. Buenas tardes. My name is Mateo Suarez.
My name is Mateo Suarez.
Estoy aquí por la comunidad de West Chicago, soy residente de West Chicago.
I'm here representing the community of West Chicago, the Latino community.
Estamos preocupados por el problema que está pasando.
We're worried about what's going on.
De no estar apoyando al mayor.
That some.
Debemos de trabajo juntos con el mayor.
That it seems that you are not supporting our major and we're here to say that we want to work together.
Por las decisiones que toman.
Whatever the decisions are.
Si todos nos unimos vamos a agarrar fuerza para apoyar al mayor.
We're all united, I mean, the mayor can do better work.
West Chicago va a ser más grande.
West Chicago will be better, will be growing.
Queremos West Chicago que sea seguro para nuestra comunidad, para nuestros hijos.
We want West Chicago to be safe for the better of our children.
Que nuestras escuelas sean seguras.
We want to make sure that our schools are safe.
Nuestras calles.
Our streets.
De día y de noche que sean seguras.
Day and night.
Todos caminamos por ellas.
We'll walk on the streets.
Y pido para trabajar juntos con el nuevo mayor.
And I ask you to work together with the new mayor.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Next, we have Jared Pletcher.
Good evening, my name is Jared Pletcher. I'm a resident of West Chicago. I'm here this evening to speak in favor of Mayor Boeby being allowed to appoint an administrator and legal counsel of his choosing. The citizens of West Chicago voted on April 1st for a change in administration and for a change in how the government of this city operates. Such change cannot be executed faithfully in the manner the people are asking for without a change in administrator or a change in legal counsel. I urge the city council to approve the vacation of these positions and allow Mayor Boeby to appoint candidates of his choosing in keeping with state and municipal law and the desire of West Chicago citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan Colwin.
Good evening, my name is Dan Colwin and I proudly live in Ward 1. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I just want to let you know, I've been a resident here for 16 years. I love West Chicago. My wife and I, we've recently been thinking about purchasing a new home. We are only considering West Chicago. We have two sons in the local school district and think it is phenomenal. We love this community. I was teaching my sons recently about local government as a result of everything that's been going on. And I got to tell him, buddy, I get one voice, one vote. And in West Chicago, I am one of 25,000 votes. And that is so much more powerful than at the federal level where I am one of 350 million votes. This is where we get to create change. This is where we get to create action. This is where we get to move the things that we care about forward. I've recently learned that I didn't know a whole lot about local politics and didn't actually even really know that I lived in Ward 1. And so I was really encouraged to find that out. This is great. I, I, I just, I ask that you would take seriously that we want change in this community. That 65% of people voted for change. And then I ask that, that you would consider that in this room and as you continue to govern us wisely. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Next, we have Donna Santiago.
Hi, first I want to congratulate all you on your successful campaign and winning out there, there. My concern here was the last meeting. Um, I found out that some aldermen didn't respect certain aldermen. Um, there was name calling, which I thought was inappropriate, especially for somebody that's supposed to be higher standard than anybody else. I think that was wrong. Um, I don't think that members of the council, when they are in the meeting, should be on their cellphone. There is nothing more important than doing city business and not being on a cellphone and disrespecting other people. I've lived in this community 53 years. I have always volunteered, whether it be with the police departments, commissions. I'm now on the senior council with one of our Senator Vila, the senior council, I'm on that. I've done, you name it, I've done it in this town. And I think it was so heartbreaking the way this last meeting on May 5th was held. I can't tell you how disturbed I was by it. And I would hope that every one of you that were doing the disrespect to the other council members would look deep in yourself and realize they're here to make this town better that we all voted for. And to just move on, get over it, and do what's best for the residents in West Chicago. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Riani.
Steve Riani, Ward 2. I honestly have no idea what I'm about to say right now. I've been debating it all day long. There are things that I am extremely proud of, extremely happy for. There are things that I am very angry about, personal things that have happened that I want to express my anger for. But being here and seeing all the people here, I think the right move is to turn the other cheek and to say now is the time to move forward and put everything that happened in the past behind all of us and decide that from now on, we are, we go. And we go into the future together, making we go the best it can be for everybody who lives here, no matter what language you speak, no matter where your kids go to school, no matter what small community you represent in we go. We are all here together. We're all going to be stuck here together, so we better figure out how to work together. I'm very proud of my new friends who put in such hard work to get where you are. Congratulations to all of you. Longtime friends who have helped to get those people there. Thank you. I hope that moving forward, we go get to where we all dream it will be.
Thank you. Jonathan Wolf.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Wolf. I'm, I live in Ward 1. I also represent the organization We Go For The People, which is just a community organization whose goal is to improve the relationship and the communication between all of you and the people of West Chicago. I just want to talk a little bit about how people, what we've seen over and over is people just don't feel like they are listened to here. Either when they express concerns, they don't get a response, or when something important is coming, it doesn't feel like there's any interest in sharing that with people and getting honest feedback. To speak specifically about the city administrator issue, I think that, you know, people voted for Dan Boeby because he showed that he listens to us. He talked to thousands of people, knocked on thousands of doors, and showed that he listened to us. And we voted him in so that he could make changes to make sure that we were listened to here. So when we come to the swearing in ceremony and we, we see Dan get sworn in and the new council member sworn in. And then we see the council try and just push in the previous city administrator without giving anyone a chance to weigh in, without giving Dan a chance to kind of express why he might even want to consider someone different. That just makes us feel like you don't care, you're not listening to us, you're not, you don't have any concern for why people are frustrated with how the city is being run. There's a lot of issues we would like to deal with. And the city administrator is just one piece that we would like to get past. But we know that Dan has talked to people and listened to people and we trust him to find a person that will move West Chicago forward. And so that's why it's really important to us that he gets that chance. And I think he wants to speak with all of you, he wants to get your advice. But it's just, it started off so contentious because it was, because you guys tried to force it through without giving anyone a chance for real input. That's one of the frustrations we've experienced for a long time.
About 30 seconds.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's about it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Claude.
My name is Denise Claude. I'm a resident of Ward 4. I have called West Chicago home since 2006. My husband and mother-in-law have lived in West Chicago since 1995. And since 2018, I have had the privilege of working for one of the many businesses in our industrial park. Our son has gone through District 33 schools from kindergarten through 8th grade and now attends the local high school. To say our family has roots here would be an understatement. We make it a point to eat local and support as many of the small businesses in town as we can. Being a part of this community for so many years, it has been disheartening to see how little has progressed. That's why when Mayor Boeby announced his candidacy, I was proud to support him and his platform for change. Unfortunately, I recently learned that some of our elected aldermen and older women appear to have forgotten who they were elected to serve. Were cho, they were chosen by the people of West Chicago to represent us, not to serve their own interests or those of City Hall. It is troubling to hear that some of the members of the council may be standing in the way of a smooth transition to preventing the mayor from selecting his team. As any newly mayor or even the president of the United States is entitled to do so. The people of West Chicago voted for change. I urge our elected officials to respect the choice and remember who they worked for. We, the residents, have woken up and we are paying attention. We're watching and we are listening.
Thank you. Emily Hall.
Hello, my name is Emily Hall. I live in Ward 1. I'm a mom of two toddlers, one of them's in preschool at Pioneer School. I love West Chicago and another thing that I am is I'm a small business owner. I run a micro bakery out of my house, Sugar and Shine Warm Cookies. And I, for the first time ever, I vended at Blooming Fest on Saturday and it was so much fun and it just reminded me how, what I love about this city, which is how much it supports local. I mean, other people have already said it. You guys, we care about small businesses, we care about local. And that's a huge reason why I was proud to vote for Mayor Boeby. I would just love to see that change that you're, you are excited about making. I think all of us are excited about being a part of, to be a smooth thing. So I just urge everyone on the council, please, like, let's work together and keep West Chicago the beautiful, small, funky, but growing place that it should be. Also, I brought the extra cookies that I have from Blooming Fest, so anyone who wants.
Thank you. Luanne Huska.
Well, members of the city council, I bring to you a letter signed by 134 residents of West Chicago, including myself. We are deeply concerned by what took place on May 5th at the city council meeting when various members of the city council opposed Mayor Daniel Boeby's declaration of vacancies, appointed interims, and searched for, announced permanent search for, search for permanent replacement, city administrator, corporate council, and police chief. As others have said here, the April 1st election demonstrated overwhelming desire for change. And this change cannot be possible with an administrative carried over from the previous administration whom this mayor did not elect, did not pick. We support Mayor Boeby's decisions because they align with the spirit and the letter of the law. The city ordinance, section 2121, is clear that the city administrator's appointment ended at the term of the past mayor. The spirit of the law here is intended to allow the new mayor to bring in a city administrator who will carry out their new priorities. We residents chose the new mayor because we support those priorities. We're not against you all, but we wanted something different. The city ordinance in section 241 further allows the mayor to appoint city administrator with the advice and consent of city council, as you all have made resoundingly clear, you want to be a part of the appointment. We understand the spirit of the law to mean that the decision of city administrator is to be made by the mayor in collaboration with the city council, but this is an executive decision, not the decision of the city council. The new mayor should not be shackled by the previous administration's choice of city administrator or corporate council or police chief. We are very troubled by the members of the city council who attempted to renew the contract of the previous city administrator, Michael Gutman, without any input from the new mayor. This demonstrates a spirit of unwillingness to work in partnership with the new mayor, who was voted in by the people of West Chicago in a landslide election. 1,653 versus 1,036, or 52% of the vote versus 36%. Let's be clear, city council, when you are opposing the new mayor, you're not just opposing him, you are blocking what the majority of West Chicago wants, including your own constituents. Currently, the city administrator and legal council refuse to leave claiming their right to stay above the previously stated laws and they're doing so because the city council is backing them. We respectfully request that you put your interest in the community and the voices of residents and our concerns above any personal interest in the situation. Please tell Mr. Gutman and Mr. Bond to leave. It's time. Keeping them is wasting our time and money. We ask that you work with Mr. Boeby to appoint a new city administrator and corporate council. We're watching carefully and we expect you to change.
Thank you. Louise Handle.
Good evening, my name is Louise Handle. I've lived in West Chicago over 34 years. I live in Ward 5. I'm here to address the difficult transition to the new mayor and his team. First, I want to extend appreciation to everybody that has represented West Chicago in any form, past and present. But the 2025 election has been held and the new representatives for the people have been sworn in. It is now the duty and the responsibility of the entire council and mayor to work together, acting in the best interest of their constituents and the city as a whole. Need to consider issues together, discuss the merits respectfully, without bias, come to a unified decision. This often is going to involve necessary compromise. The role of staff and committees is advisory. Use their information. Do your own independent research to make your decision. Going forward immediately, I ask all involved to stop the clandestine planning, divisive posturing, and come to the dais with constructive, thoughtful comments on the individuals, individual issues that are so important. It might be appropriate at the next meeting to review the oath and code of conduct policies as a reminder for the entire group and orientation of sorts. I particularly hope that the apparent obstruction and seeming animosity of some council people will stop. Mayor Boeby was duly elected. He is the leader now. Directives and expectations flow from the mayor and you, the city council, to the staff, not the other way around. And you, the city council, in no way represent the staff, nor is it appropriate to take a side in their own personal conflict. You represent us, the people. Corporate council is on hand to advise about the law, not strategize. It is far past time to come together, find some common ground, and do your job for the people of West Chicago. There are many positive projects to look forward to implementing. Please listen, consider our input. We expect it, we voted for it, and we deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirk Jarris.
My review of the policy of public comment is that I'm limited to three minutes and that I must address my public remark to the mayor. So, Mr. Bovee, my name's Kurt Jarris and I'm a resident and small business director here in West Chicago. I was out of town for work two weeks ago and missed your first meeting as our new mayor. I wanted to wish you congratulations on your new position, although I know it doesn't pay all that much. I was hopeful to watch a livestream of the meeting while I was away, only to realize that the city does not livestream its meetings. Should the city have a need for that, my business may be of service. Instead, I ended up reading news articles of the unfortunate circumstances that transpired a couple of weeks ago. My own interest in politics as a poli sci undergrad major led me to look up the easily available municipal code of our city. Chapter two, Article Three, Division One, details the role of the city administrator. Section two dash one two one states, quote, "The appointment shall be by written contract for a period not exceeding four years, and which must terminate no later than the end of the term of the then presiding mayor." I'll repeat that. The contract, quote, "Must terminate no later than the end of the term of the then presiding mayor." To me, this is crystal clear. As such, I do not recognize the man currently masquerading as the city administrator, and it only causes suspicion to an external observer like myself when the city administrator himself, someone who very likely knows the ins and outs of these codes and regulations like the back of his hand, would continue to operate contrary to them. It causes me to wonder if he has simply been hoping to have a sufficient number of council members who have a go with the flow mentality, who would be unaware of the rule of law that structures our city government. I suspect that recent political changes have brought the most drama some of these council members have seen during their tenure. I applaud you for your recent action and encourage you to remain steadfast, to not falter to pressure that you are probably feeling. Know that you have supporters who elected you to bring change. In a three-man race, you received a majority, not just a plurality, but a majority of the votes. I also wish you would relay to incumbent city council members that change is afoot. I am disappointed in the response that a few particular members have had to you, a man duly elected and with support from residents of various political identities. You brought unity amongst neighbors in a time when there is fierce division at our national level of government. It's your vision and your common sense values that the people of West Chicago voted for. I personally have been fed up with historical properties being bought up by the city and destroyed only for empty lots to sit as the city restricts entrepreneurship and investors. Should any incumbent seek reelection in the next term, continue to obstruct the reason why we elected you as mayor, they will be defeated in their race. Unless they begin to constructively cooperate with you, I will personally ensure through political activities that each and every one of them will lose their reelection campaign. A new train of new ideas has arrived at the West Chicago station, and the council number, members should get on board or be left behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to give public comment that for any reason we missed your sheet? That's all that I have. Okay. We will then include the public participation section of our meeting. And we are going to read a proclamation. I believe that we have our representative here.
Yes, yes, we do.
Great. Why don't you uh come up to the front if you would, please, and I will uh read this proclamation. Whereas safety is the highest priority of the highways and streets of our city and state, whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education and awareness. Whereas motorcycles are a primary, common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. Whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the members of Abate of Illinois, a brotherhood aimed towards education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education and awareness in high school drivers' education programs, and to the general public in our city and state presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over one hundred and twenty thousand participants in Illinois over the past nine years. And whereas all motorcyclists should join Abate of Illinois Incorporated in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcycles as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect of the citizens of our city and state. And whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable, charitable organizations. And whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the, the city of West Chicago and throughout the great state of Illinois. Therefore, I, Daniel Bovee, mayor of the city of West Chicago and the great state of Illinois, in recognition of the thirty-eight years of Abate Illinois Incorporated and over three hundred and fifty-two thousand three hundred and eighteen registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the continued role Illinois serves as a leader in motorcycle safety, education and awareness, do hereby proclaim the month of May this year of two thousand twenty-five as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the city of West Chicago, and urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness of our roadways. In witness thereof, I have here to set my hand, cause the great seal of West, the city of West Chicago, to be affixed in this, this nineteenth day of May in the year two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you for being here, Nathan, and representing Abate.
Yes. Actually, can I ask somebody a favor?
Yes.
I
Can I get a couple pictures, I think?
Yes, I
Do we have a city?
Thank you.
Perfect.
Uh, should I explain my organization or are you gonna?
If you would like to give a brief explanation, that would be great.
Yes, my name is Nathan Koypach and I am the PR coordinator for one of the chapters of Abate of Illinois, more specifically the Duquesne chapter, which covers DuPage County and Kane County. So, we have the goal of promoting motorcycle safety and freedom across various regions and across the whole state of Illinois. And as this proclamation hints at, we're this is, this is a month where we spend time making sure that people keep their eyes on the road because with the warm weather, motorcyclists are bound to be, are bound to be driving the roads. Odds are, you've probably seen one or several sometime this month and it's important to keep an eye out for them due to the, due to the nature of the vehicle, we have to take extra care in order to in order to prevent nasty accidents, or should I say crashes due to the nature of due to the nature of the incidents. In particular, we actually raised awareness this month with a motorcycle awareness day because we've had issues in the following years with the advent of cell phones. People have some people have habits of texting while they're driving and it's not good in general, but it's especially bad when you're dealing with a motorcycle because they're more difficult to spot. And when things are harder to spot, you're more likely to hit them without meaning to. So, that is so that is among the things we promote as well as promoting, promoting freedom for motorcyclists so that they're not so that they can do things like customize their bike and pick certain gear without having to worry about overregulation from state and local authorities. So, I appreciate the state's efforts to, I, or should I say the city's efforts to promote our safe, to promote motorcycle safety and join us in creating a safer and more aware community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Nathan. Um, I lost a good friend about three years ago, Dave DeYoung, a West Chicago resident, in a motorcycle accident. And this is something that many of us have personal experiences with. So, thank you. The next item that we have, um, we are, actually, I'm going to entertain a motion. Or, I'm going to entertain a motion that we suspend the rules, uh, the normal rules of the meeting in order to look at our new business first, and then after that, the old business. Uh, and the reason being that, uh, as, as many of you are aware, I, I, I think that a lot of the new business things that we are going to look at are going to clarify the, the, the old business. Yes?
Uh, yes, I would first make a motion to approve the corrected agenda.
Okay. Is there a second?
Oh, second the approval of the correct agenda.
Now, now, just to be clear, we're talking about the agenda that we have here, correct?
The correct.
The one that we
Posted on the front door.
The one that is on the podium right there?
That's not the practice thing, then, no.
So, I am aware that there was an agenda that was sent out by Alderman Birch Ferguson uh, to members of the media that was entitled, uh, Corrected Agenda. Uh, Aldermen do not, as you know, have the ability to just post a, an alternate agenda. And so, that's out of order. Because it did not meet the requirements of of an agenda. So, I am going to strike that as out of order.
I would, I would make a motion then to ask council, uh, the advice on that, if that was illegal or not.
Okay. Mr. Jacobson, we have been asked for council to respond to, uh, the alternate agenda that was put out by, uh, Alderman Birch Ferguson. And let me just point out a, a couple things, um, before I give the floor to Mr. Jacobson. A, we have one official spokesperson of the city of West Chicago by city ordinance, and that is the chief executive officer who is the mayor. B, the agenda which has been mentioned uh, was not put out forty-eight hours before, um, the meeting would begin. It was not distributed to the members of the council, and it was not posted on the website. All items which are required for us to meet the Open Meetings Act. And so, the reason that I am striking that motion is out of order is because we would be in violation of the Open Meetings Act if we were to adopt the alternate agenda. With that, I will ask Mr. Jacobson to, um, give the the city, um, the official corporate counsel advice.
So, obviously, he's done a really good job. I don't really need to talk much, but if you have, you have to put out an agenda so the public knows what's going to be in the meeting. If you put out an alternate agenda, now the public doesn't know what the agenda is, the media, and I believe that's going to violate the Open Meetings Act, to have an alternate agenda floating out there with different items under it. Um, the concept of the agenda and the rules in the state of Illinois is so everyone knows what's going to be discussed in general. When you create your own, and as the mayor said, he's a spokesperson for the city. When you create your own and you send it out now, I don't even know whether the attorney general is going to say that's confusing as to either agenda now. You know, it's, I don't know what the public thinks, but I think to have an alternate agenda, it just clearly violates all of them. It's, it's something that would just make this whole meeting, in my opinion, maybe worthless.
I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of discussing new business prior to old business. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Let's, uh, call the roll, please.
Your honor, I'd like to recognize, uh, Pat Bond, please, to give a little explanation.
You do not have the floor, Alderman Demus. We have a motion which has been seconded, and we are going to call the roll.
I apologize. I missed the first person who did that motion.
That was Alderman Myers.
Thank you.
So, in calling the roll, I'm going to say, uh, Alderman Myers. Alderman Avinia Soto. Okay, and then I'll go down the line. Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcatar Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
No.
Alderman Sheehan.
No.
Alderman Hallett. Alderman Correto Munos.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
No.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
No.
Alderman Smith.
No.
Alderman Switek.
No.
Alderman Stow. Alderman Marano.
No.
Okay. We are going to take the items for consent. The consent agenda, this is business which needs to occur in order for the city to you do not have the floor. In order for the, uh, city to continue, uh, to run smoothly, we are going to go ahead and, uh, look at the items for consent. This is the opportunity for any, uh, council members, if you wish to remove anything from the consent agenda, you may do so now.
Point of order.
Uh, I'm taking, I'm, right now, I'm taking, uh, items that, uh, want, uh, any of you that want to remove an item?
I think, I, I think, correct, is a point of order that we didn't do.
I just wanna, I just wanna say, we didn't approve the minutes for report for district dispersment report, which are always done previous to the consent agreement.
Okay, um, that is not, uh, a binding thing, but I don't mind approving the, uh, uh, we can do that. That sounds good.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes of city council meeting on May fifth. Second.
Okay, is there a second? Um, is there any discussion?
Alderman Switek had the, the, the second.
Yes, Alderman Bibi.
Just in general, reading the minutes as they're presented to us in the packets, I, on first reading, noted seventeen errors, but I'd like a chance to correct prior to our approving these minutes. I know it's been moved and seconded, but my personal vote at this point would be no, because the error is in the current record.
Any other discussion? Alderman Myers.
I would agree. I would think, uh, maybe a better use for our time would be to collect all the comments that they have on the agenda or on the minutes that need to be corrected and email them to, uh, Valeria, have her make the edits and then release a new set of minutes with those corrections. And then, uh, we don't have to spend all nights talking about all the corrections.
Yes, Alderman Ryan, Alderman Myers, it was a long meeting. Um, there's definitely some things that were missed in there. Um, I, I've got my list. Sounds like Alderman. I've got my list. Sounds like Alderman Bibi has this. Yeah, let's.
Yes, Alderman Brown.
I would, I would agree, and I would like to see us go forward with the corrected agenda so that everyone has the capability of seeing it in time. I do just want to make reference that even with our current dispersment report, we are still paying our, our attorney fees to the gentleman sitting behind me, known as Pat Bond, to represent the city council. He has not been, there is no attempt at this time being paid.
Is there any other discussion? So the idea, if I'm understanding correctly, Alderman Bibi, is that we would pull this, table it for the next, for the next meeting, and give all of the council opportunity to submit amendments or corrections, and then bring it again next meeting for the approval.
If appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to that.
Do we need to vote on the first motion that we have that has been seconded? Okay, all right. So we did have a, a motion and a second from Alderman Hallett. All in favor, say aye. Okay. Hey, good job.
Corporate dispersment.
Corporate, thank you, Alderman Hallett. And you're right, thank you. I'm a little new to this, so I'm going to get things out of order sometimes. We have a corporate dispersment report, which we need to approve. Would someone, yes, Alderman Demus?
I'd then make a motion to approve the corporate dispersment report of May nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of eight hundred and one thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty cents.
Do we have a second? Okay, Alderman Smith, I saw that hand first. Any discussion? Yes, Alderman Hallett?
This requires a roll call.
So we will have, we will call the roll.
Okay. Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Correto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout. Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay.
Just preemptively.
Preemptively. So I'm going to go ahead and
For infrastructure.
For, all right. I'm going to go ahead and, and move us on to our, you're wanting to do your infrastructure report, okay? We will go ahead and have our infrastructure report from Alderman Morano.
Yes, your honor, we have six items tonight. Item seven A, resolution number twenty-five R zero zero three four, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a construction maintenance agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for at-grade crossing and pedestrian sidewalk improvements on Harvester Road for a amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-three dollars. Item seven D, resolution number twenty-five R zero zero three five, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a public roadway endorsement agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Community for an accurate crossing and pedestrian sidewalk improvement at Nuclear Drive for a amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-four thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars. Item seven C, resolution number twenty-five R zero zero three six, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute construction contract with Astrada Construction Company of Addison, Illinois, for the twenty-twenty-five concrete maintenance program for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. Item seven D, resolution number twenty-five R zero zero three seven, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Hosh Concrete LLC of Varynton, Illinois, for the police station front entrance improvement project for a amount not to exceed one hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars. Item seven E, resolution number twenty-five R zero zero three eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with RW Dunkman Company of Addison, Illinois, for the twenty-twenty-five Nuclear Drive and Northwest Avenue, I'm sorry, Northwest Avenue, reconstruction project for a amount not to exceed two million seven hundred thirty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents. And finally, item seven, resolution number twenty-five R zero zero four zero, a resolution authorizing the executive office manager to execute the supplemental BLR zero nine one one zero resolution for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code, and the mayor to execute and submit to I dot the BLR zero nine one five zero request for expenditure authorization for motor fuel tax funds to utilize additional motor fuel tax funds in the amount not to exceed one hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents for the twenty-twenty-five Nuclear Drive and Northwest Avenue reconstruction project. Obviously, it's tied to the previous items. And without, I make a motion.
Alderman Smith. Second. Let's, let's try a vote, just a voice vote. We will try a roll call vote.
All right. Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Correto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Hold up the pairs.
We have seven items, excuse me, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I was trying to get out of here. Resolution number twenty-five R zero zero four one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract agreement with MKSK Incorporated for the preparation for an architectural and historical society. Item H, who approved the West Chicago Community High School District Ninety-four's Homecoming Parade schedule for Friday, October third, twenty twenty-five. Item I, approved the Civic Fibrosis, excuse me, Fibrocious, I have a problem coming out of there. Foundation CF Cycle for Life, scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Item J, approved the West Chicago Park District's Battle of the Bands, scheduled for Friday, August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, and Saturday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Item K, approved the West Chicago Park District's Wine in the Park, scheduled for Saturday, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Item L, approved the West Chicago Park District's Hello Summer, scheduled for Saturday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Item M, approved the West Chicago Park District's Taco and Art Fest, scheduled for Saturday, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. And item N, approved the Western DuPage Chamber of Commerce's West Chicago Railroad Days, scheduled for Thursday, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, through Sunday, June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. But that, I make the motion to approve.
Alderman, just one second. I, I, I know that I did mention quickly that if anybody wanted to pull anything off the consent agenda, that they could, but then we kind of got sidetracked, so I just want to make sure that nobody was wanting to pull anything off the consent agenda. You were?
I just have a correction.
Okay.
Two, two corrections. Sorry, Alderman Hallett. With I, the event is September twenty-seventh, and then J is August twenty-ninth. That's the only thing I caught, so sorry about that.
I'm getting old.
All right, but it's correct on the, on the sheet.
It's correct on the sheet. We're just correcting for the public that are viewing.
So no one was trying to pull anything off, correct?
No.
Okay, great.
So I made the motion, and I need a second.
Alderman Smith, I saw that hand. Let's call the roll. Yes, I, I'm sorry, Alderman Brown, I saw two hands.
Okay. Alderman Hallett.
Aye.
Alderman Brown.
Aye.
Alderman Bibi.
Aye.
Alderman Alcantara Garcia.
Aye.
Alderman Sheen.
Aye.
Alderman Correto Munoz.
Aye.
Alderman Demus.
Aye.
Alderman Birch Ferguson. Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Switek.
Aye.
Alderman Stout.
Aye.
Alderman Avinia Soto.
Aye.
Alderman Morano.
Aye.
Alderman Myers.
Aye.
Okay. That passes. Item number eight, we're going to pull off the agenda. We don't have any vacancies. That was on there, just in case we did. But we're just going to pull item number eight off of the agenda. Item number nine, reports by committees. Who do we have?
I've nothing to report.
Nothing to report?
Nothing. Last report.
Yeah. Nothing to report?
Nothing in findings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I knew it was on there, but didn't know if we had anything. At this point, I would like to entertain again a motion that we that we suspend the
Point of order.
Yes.
I believe we don't have any unfinished business. So there, there's going to be to suspend the rules.
You're right. Yeah. Thank you, Alderman Myers. All right, so that was easy. Number ten, no unfinished business. Item number eleven. And I'm gonna, I'm going to kick off the new business first by just going over sort of a potential pathway forward that that you all are aware of. And we've been having a lot of conversations the last two weeks, and especially in the last three days. And here is a framework for potentially moving forward. And let me just say in preface that we cannot vote on this tonight because it was not on the agenda, but it's something that we can discuss and which would have significant ramifications for a number of the specific items under new business. I have five points in this basic framework. And what I am suggesting is that if we can agree, agree in principle around these five points, we could put it on the agenda for next, for our next meeting. So let me just lay these out as a preview.
Your honor. Has a question.
Okay, you can, yeah.
Going back to my original motion, it was first a motion and it was seconded, but we did not take a vote, a vote on that to approve the corrected agenda, and I would like to have a vote on that.
I called that out of order.
And I would also like to acknowledge Pat Bond as our attorney who we, who we pay.
Heather Brown.
I called that out of order, so we're going to move on. We are going to
Yes.
I have the floor.
Motion to move to the correct.
And I am not recognizing that motion. So there is a, five items which I am going to talk about. We can sit here all night and do the same thing that we did last meeting. And we can be here till ten-thirty if you continue to try to push the newly elected officials out of the decision-making process. That is just not going to happen. We, we dealt with these items in the last meeting, and we're not going to go back and do a repeat of those things. And so I am going to lay out five basic principles, which you can discuss, and you can tell me whatever you want about them. And I'm not going to yield the floor until I finish saying them. Once I get them out, I would be happy to hear your thoughts on them. You can agree, you can disagree. But let me attempt to give us a pathway forward rather than just spinning our wheels in the mud here for another three and a half hours, which will accomplish nothing. And the people who will be hurt by it are the residents of the city of West Chicago. So let me attempt. To give a pathway, to give a pathway forward, you may Alderman Hallett, out of respect from you, for you, I will allow you to make a point of order. Yes.
I would ask you to mention to the crowd that we do not applaud a city council meeting as we do.
I do not, I am not aware, Alderman Hallett, of any ordinance.
It's a disruptive of the meeting.
I am not aware, Alderman Hallett, of any ordinance of the city of West Chicago, which prevents applause in a meeting. I will enforce strictly that everyone in this room must keep their words respectful. There are things we all care deeply about, and I understand that. These are important things. And the members of this, this council need to be able to express their opinions about them. But if we cannot do that with respect for one another, we will not move anything forward. So I will strictly enforce that there will be no name-calling from either the council members or from the crowd, but I will not tell the crowd that they cannot applaud. I am going to lay out my five things, and then if you want to push back on them, you can do that. But allow me to attempt to give us a pathway forward so that we can actually get some business done for this city.
Mayor Bulbino, please, I would like to have
I do not recognize you, Alderman Demus. I have given you opportunities.
Dispersment report for to be recognized and explained
First
Why the approval of
Of the five items, you do not have the floor. The first of the five items is a suggestion, a proposal that we appoint a special counsel for the mayor's greenhouse situation. The reason for that is that many people have rightly thought about the fact that there is a potential conflict of interest. If I, as the mayor, am reviewing litigation which affects me personally, this is not a situation that is unique to us in West Chicago. I have a, I have an item of litigation which is in the appellate courts right now regarding a greenhouse. I think you all know that. This is not unique to us, and this is why we have the mechanism of a special counsel in our, in our system of government. One of the first things that I am doing as mayor is to ask our corporate counsel for a review of all pending litigation and for corporate counsel's recommendations on what we do with those. Now, if I were to take that for myself, for my own litigation, there would be a potential conflict of interest. So I need to be firewallled from that.
Point of order.
So I am not taking a point of order. I will not yield the floor until I finish talking. I will not yield the floor until I can complete my five items. I will not yield the floor until I complete my five items. And then I will take comment. And so in order to preserve the integrity of our, of our city government. And because I desire to be above board in all of these things, any of you who know me here know that I did not run for mayor to benefit myself personally. And we need to demonstrate that in action by firewalling me from decisions that would have the potential to benefit me from my uh, in in my, in the situation with my personal litigation. So the the proposal here is that we bring in three options that would be presented to you as the council for independent third-party special councils. And that that independent council would report back to a group of four of you. And I am suggesting that we have two of our newly affected, newly elected representatives and two of our pre-existing representatives on that select group. So that's number one. Number two, the second item. Last meeting, many of you made clear the desire to have Mr. Bond giving you counsel. Now, in the and my attorneys here can correct me if I get the details wrong, but in the 90s, there was in Illinois, a lot of litigation where the executive branches of municipal governments were struggling with the with the legislative branches over uh, where the authority lies. And so we have something called Legislative Council, which is a remedy for that situation. Because a corp, the corporate council is an appointment of the executive branch. It's an executive appointment. Now, the, when, when the issue, when the item at hand is a, is a discussion between the legislative branch, the council and the executive branch, just headed by the mayor, it 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 seems right that the legislative branch should also have legal counsel. And so I would support the idea of you as a council hiring whoever you want, Mr. Bond, to be your legislative counsel. And so that is, that is part of my proposal for you. It, it preserves the integrity of both branches of our government. The third item on the list has to do with the interim appointments of Ms. Messino as our city administrator interim and of Chief Flurry uh, as our interim police chief. Now, as I said before, the intent is to uh, move forward towards um, providing Chief Flurry with a longer-term appointment, but it what I would be asking is that next meeting that you as a council approve the interim appointments that I made. An interim appointment is something that exists in order to keep government running. In 1989, in West Chicago, some of you will remember this. We had a city administrator that was removed by the mayor at the time. And there was a big dispute over it. Tuesday, after the city council meeting, the city council meeting was Monday, the ma, the new mayor appointed an interim city administrator. I appointed an interim city administrator and an interim corporate counsel. We're gonna, we're gonna talk about that in a second. I also appointed an interim police chief in view of extending his, his contract. And so what I am doing is coming to you and saying, I am asking you, I'm giving you a chance to approve, which obviously means that you can also reject my interim appointment. This is my, one of my olive branches to you guys. I, I respect your position as the legislative branch of our government. Now, what you have to keep in mind is that if you reject that appointment, we would at that point not have a city administrator, at which point I would appoint a different person as interim and bring them to you. And then you could approve or you could reject. That is your, that is your determination. Um, it has happened in the courts that after multiple rejections that a judge gives the executive branch the, the, the ability to just choose from the appointments that were rejected. But that, that is our system. That is legally how it works. Fourth point. I think there is a strong desire on the part of some that Just listening, you're not, yeah, you're not, you're not reading. Um, I did send you a four-page letter which spells a lot of this out and so you can read that, but this is a five-point framework which has been, which has been under discussion up until 20 minutes before we got here. And so that's why I am presenting it verbally. Uh, I worked all weekend talking to many of you and all day today trying to get us to a point that we could move forward. And so I do not have uh, a written version of it. It is for discussion, as I said, and something that would be put on the agenda for next week. So to review uh, yes, sorry, next, next meeting, not, not next week. So to review, uh, item number one, and I it's a good point. I, it would be helpful if I had this written out and I wish I did. Uh, but uh, appoint a special counsel for the mayor's greenhouse issue. Uh, two, city council can choose to hire a legis, a legislative counsel. Three, um, city council would approve the interim appointment or consider approving the interim appointment of Tia Messino and Chief Flurry for a maximum of six months. That was a concern that was raised last time is, you know, are we gonna just keep over and over uh, appointing an interim? I have no interest in doing that. Based on the count, uh, on the advice of our staff, I, I chose six months as a reasonable allotment of time. And if it were to go past that, the council would have to act again in this scenario to to extend the time period. The fourth point, then Mr. Jacobson, the interim corporate counsel. I know that some of you have concerns with the fact that Mr. Jacobson represented me in the past, not currently, uh, but in the past in litigation. And so I would be willing, and I've spoken with uh, all the parties uh, involved here, to appoint a new interim corporate counsel, which would be the firm of Ansel Glink. And am I saying it correctly? I don't, okay. We have a representative from Ansel Glink here this evening. A large firm which represents, correct me if I'm wrong, at least 60 or 70 municipalities. Can I ask you to just tell us, give us a brief little introduction to your firm?
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Stirk. I'm a senior counsel at Ansel Glink. I actually live in Lombard, about 20 minutes down the road in St. uh, right off St. Charles. Um, we have uh, several offices throughout the, the Chicago Mid Area. Uh, we have our Naperville office, uh, and most of the attorneys who'd be working uh, on behalf of the city, um, are based out of that office. Myself, Carolyn Crafteffer, Derek Price, they're two equity partners, two owners of the firm. Um, and we also have the sworn associates, our Chicago office, um, multiple partners that work down there. Uh, we represent, we set over 70 local governments, municipalities. Uh, we also represent countless libraries, school districts, park districts, um, you name it. Uh, if it's local government, we generally represent. We're looking forward to having an opportunity to work with all of you and for the town to be, uh, we going, I guess, we go. Thank you.
Thank you. And so in this you know, framework, if we could agree on it, I would make a new appointment of corporate counsel of the firm of Ansel Glink. And um,
Question.
Mister
Just a question.
Sure.
Temporary.
Yes, temporary, yes. Uh, again, like in that same uh, six-month you know, uh, maximum unless it comes back to the city council. Again, the point is getting us to a, to a place where we can work together to find permanent people for these, for these spots. We just, we need we need an off-ramp here. We need a, a way to move forward. And so that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking you to consider. We would, we would all be giving up something. We would all be gaining something. But I think that both branches of our West Chicago government would be respected. So just to finish off that the corporate counsel, so Mr. Jacobson could, if it if it is able to, if it is, if it is amenable to him, we've had some uh, discussion with Ansel Glink, but uh, he could be hired to be one of the people that represents them. And if I'm getting my terminology wrong, correct me, but uh, just like when we had Mr. Bonds from, sometimes we'd have Mr. Conway, who I saw here somewhere, sometimes Mr. Bond, um, and uh, sometimes their other, other partner. Uh, so Mr. Jacobson could possibly be one of the uh, one of the attorneys that would be involved. Uh, I don't want you to be surprised by that. But we would have a large firm that would be representing us and would have a, quite a, quite a large portfolio of, of attorneys who um, would have different specialties and provide that, uh, that backstop for us. And then the fifth and final thing in this framework would be that we, well, the fifth and final thing in this framework would be that we give Mr. Gutman a pathway to achieve his goals of retirement. And I have uh, Mr. Gutman and I uh, have written a joint statement that I would like to read to let you know that we are continuing to make progress. It kind of stalled out for a week, not gonna lie. Um, but we're, we're back at it and I believe moving forward. And I, I, I feel very hopeful that we are close to finding an amicable settlement which would allow him to bow out of his role and yet and yet achieve his goals. And so that statement, uh, Mr. Gutman and I uh, kind of worked out like literally five minutes before the uh, before the meeting here, we, we got, we got our final version of it. And let me read it to you with his additions. Uh, the city is in an ongoing discuss, is in ongoing discussions with Mr. Gutman to negotiate an amicable agreement which will allow Mr. Gutman to transition out of the office of city administrator in a way which meets the goals of both parties. The aim of this agreement is to provide Mr. Gutman with fair and equitable compensation through this transition while allowing the mayor to exercise his statutory authority to choose the key leader of his administration upon a vacancy occurring. Since this is an ongoing negotiation, we will not be discussing details of proposed agreements at this time. Once an agreement is reached, it would need to be approved by city council vote. As part of its ongoing commitment to transparency, the public will be given details of the agreement when it is brought before city council. And so that's the, the fifth element of it is we would bring the final resolution hopefully to the next city council meeting. And that these five items would more or less move forward together. At this point.
Have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, so if we go by the agenda, I see that you've kind of mixed things up a little bit, but um, I don't know that we addressed the um, basic rules of city council meetings, proceedings and performance with city council's custom and practice, which was on the original agenda. Is that something that you will address?
I, I'd be happy to address that after we, after we have this discussion. Yes. Alderman Hall.
In regards to police chief.
Yes.
We have not had that good of a chief since Goldman Astro was chief here years ago. And we, we interviewed over 60 people for that job before he was selected.
Yeah.
And I think it's ridiculous even to put him on interim is to keep him on because he's doing one heck of a job for this city. Yeah, I have not felt more secure in this city than when he took over and with the staff he's got. We got the best thinking police department in the whole country as far as I'm concerned. And he makes it what it is. And that's my endorsement of him.
Yes. Alderman Brown.
So I don't, I know it was slightly scrambled on where we were going with this and we don't have a copy of anything in front of us. And we don't know to the extent of what the conversation was with Mr. Gutman. But I did write down, as far as number two of whatever you were reading, I just want to let you know that that does violate code of conduct. Um, you cannot have four people in a meeting together that would violate the Open Meetings Act.
It has to be a published agenda.
You can ask.
You can't have majority of a forum on the city council meeting without having a, uh, without calling that as a public meeting, noticing it up pursuant to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Uh, and just if I could just address the corrected agenda.
No, not, not now, thank you. So, so we, no, we're not gonna go back there. And I allowed you to be on the dais. But I, I, I do not want to go back there, but thank you. So we, we, we are going to keep moving with our discussion.
I could make up.
No, you may not. I'm sorry, but you are not, you are not, you do not have authority
Well, I do.
Right now.
Through the city code.
You do not.
And under the yellow
If, if you, if you have, if you have such a desire, you can seek a petition of declaratory judgment and ask uh, a, a, ask, ask a, a judge to let you know who is right and who is wrong here. But we are not going to, we are not going to go back. Um, and, and we're gonna keep moving forward. Um, we're not gonna allow the meeting to be hijacked. We're not gonna allow the meeting to be hijacked. And so we're gonna keep moving forward. I will take council members. Um, let's continue to discuss the issue at hand or we will be here till 10:30. And I will call an emergency meeting and we will be back here in three days. And I will call another one and we will be back here again in three days. This is no good for the city for us to continue uh, to continue going back to things that have been decided. They, they, the, a, a, and, and, and yes, I, I was being a bit facetious there, Mr. Bond, but as you know, Alderman Smith said something very poignant last meeting. He said, I wish there was a higher authority that we could take this to, that who could tell us what is right. I wish there was a higher authority that we could take this to, that who could tell us what is right. And that's what we did. The, the Herald, um, no offense to our representatives from the Herald here, but I felt that the Herald article was quite inflammatory and uh incorrect uh when it said that Daniel Bovee was suing the city council. It kind of missed the whole point there and it was the incorrect name of the suit. What we did is the city of West Chicago petitioned for declaratory judgment in the Eighteenth Circuit Court. And that is, I'm not, I'm not asking for your opinion right now, Mister Bond. And so what we did. So what we did at that point is we were bringing, we were bringing a suit to the Eighteenth District Court, which asks a judge to, which asks a judge to tell us who is right and who is wrong. Um, i- in specifically with the issue of, does the mayor have the ability to make a declaration of a vacancy? Does the mayor have the ability to uh appoint an interim? And those issues are going to be, if needed, if needed. Those issues are gonna be decided by a judge. Now, we have the ability as a council to short, short circuit that whole process and make it all go away by working together. The, the process has to be started because it is a lengthy process. And uh, we can't expect that it's, we're, that we're gonna get a judgment in a week or two weeks, maybe six months. Um, but meanwhile, we have the ability to short circuit that process uh as, as, as a council by voting on, on, on the things that I am giving you the opportunity to, to use your, your statutory authority to do. I'm asking you to approve or disapprove my, my picks. I'm, I'm, I'm saying, if you want to, to retain counsel, you are free to, to retain legislative counsel.
That would require.
And I, please no more outbursts, Mister Bond. Please no more outbursts, no.
I have an obligation.
And, and so so we can sit here all night again, doing the same thing we did last meeting. If the only thing that the council will be satisfied with is giving Mister Gutman another four-year contract. That will not happen. It is not lawful. And I will not, I will not cede my responsibility to the people of West Chicago who voted for change by giving up that statutory authority. So we are going to. If you want to get anything done tonight, I would suggest that uh and I, I will recognize, uh, I will recognize any of you that are wanting to, to, to continue with our discussion of these, of these items. If we are gonna get anything done tonight, I would suggest that we have some discussion about the potential pathway forward. Otherwise, we can sit here till ten thirty doing what we did last time. Uh, does anyone have a discussion of the item that is at hand, not just going back to saying the same things about bring back Mister Gutman and let's um establish the uh, the, 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 the rules. Um, Mister Murano.
Um, so I, I know that Alderman Murano.
I, I apologize, Alderman Murano.
That was a big point.
Yes, it was. You're right. I apologize.
Doesn't matter.
Thank you.
Um, so I, I, so I, I, we, we've talked about this at great lengths and I, I, and I think you and I have had some conversations. I've talked with other aldermen and talked with my counterpart about this. And I, I don't know that the, the, some of the legacy aldermen are looking for a four-year contract for Michael Gutman. I think ultimately what we're trying to do is resolve the issue of the contract dispute. Uh, we want to put the city of West Chicago in a good position to transition Michael as, as he's per his wishes of, on his way out. Um, but at the same time, keep the city of West Chicago from getting sued for a four-year contract that may be existing. Um, so I, and I think there's a way to do both. Um, and again, it sounds like you're in conversations, but I know you keep mentioning that the city council is asking for a four-year contract. I just want to make sure it's clear. That's far from true.
Um, so last meeting, you were asking for a four-year contract. I am pleased to hear that that is no longer the case. But I, I do have to say that um, you know, in, in the negotiations with Mister Gutman, um, there is a mechanism for him to uh stay as an employee for a limited period of time, uh, which would enable him to reach his retirement goals, um, but not as city administrator. And so I, I think I can go into, to, to that much detail here. Um, and obviously, if, if, if we are able to reach that agreement, we would have uh legal uh advice and have it written up so that we were not getting sued. Yes.
Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yeah.
So, um, uh, with Michael's contracts, I think the biggest thing that the city would, I, I, again, I'm not speaking for everyone, maybe just speaking for me, but ultimately what we would want to see is when we did, when you did have those discussions with Michael came to the table that it's something that he signed off on, it's something that he would agree to. Um, a- and again, I think that that would um, for I think that would be the best course of action for, for any kind of future suits, uh, as well as Michael's, uh, living up, letting the city live up to what we've agreed on to Michael's contract. Does that make sense?
Uh, yes, I think that's what namical agree, agreement means. Um, yes, Alderman Debus.
Uh, yeah, I just, I'm back to the original agenda. I'm sorry. Um, but you had um, on their item app, which was update and discussion regarding uh yourself uh versus Michael Gutman. Uh, pending eighteen, you just, I didn't read it all, but that's the item app. Um, I was just, I wanted to get clarification on that because I thought in order to have any kind of litigation, it would have to be upon the approval and consent of the council. And so I guess I'm just trying to understand, get clarification on that.
Uh, so no, it doesn't have to be. And, and you can, you can, no, no, Mister Bond, thank you, but no. Um, the, the letter that Mister Jacobson sent out this week uh cited uh Supreme, Illinois Supreme Court um uh decisions which demonstrated that um a mayor can bring a suit. And um, like I said, you guys can, you guys, you guys are welcome to um uh retain a legislative uh council. And I, I, I think that is, that is, that is fair and just. Uh, yes, Alderman Switek, a question.
I see a conflict between having two lawyers representing two bodies. Um, we would go with, let's say, your idea of who I see a conflict is there would be one counsel for you and the.
Or the executive branch, say, yeah.
And one for.
The legislative branch.
And if, once again, if, let's say we picked two people, these two gentlemen. We also have two opposing or different views each time.
I, I think.
There's that problem, I foresee. Thank you.
Um, that's a good point, Alderman Switek. And maybe there's a little bit of confusion because um, the, the legislative council would not be the corporate council. So we would not enter into each decision that required legal counsel and get both opinions. It would be for the, for the purpose of specifically the disagreement over the um over these, these issues of legislative or executive authority. Uh, the, the, the uh corporate council would continue to be the corporate council dealing with um, the, the, the items that uh, that the corporate council is, is uh, is assigned by our code of ordinances. And the legislative council would be for that, for that specific um area. Yes, Alderman Sheen.
Hi, thanks for calling me. I have some questions. So you had your conversation with Michael Gutman and to talk about his retirement. So it sounds like, so he still is the city administrator.
No.
So that, for retirement, I mean, you're still working as city administrator. So, and then I hear change, change. That's all we hear is change. That's great, but what is the change? We didn't hear, he's worked here twenty-seven years. We didn't hear what were the terrible bad things that he's done. Our city hasn't been in debt. We won awards. He holds people accountable for ordinances. Our city was running great. So I just wanted to know, what are some of the terrible things that he's done? He's worked here twenty, if you had a job for twenty-seven years, like, and you said, now you're gone. Wouldn't you be like, why? What has happened? I was just confused on what was so terrible that happened. Uh, and then I have one more. I'm not done yet. Thank you.
Sorry.
So we're talking about the, this uh attorney, who's paying him? Did anything go through finances in our budget that you're hiring this law firm or paying him? Where is this money coming from? Is it in our budget? Is what I'm concerned about. I mean, I don't, where's it gonna come out of?
Are you done? Is that?
For now.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
My first question, like, I never worked with Michael Gutman before, because I'm new here. But I don't think it matters if he did wrong or he did bad. Like, I, I, I heard it's like great things about him out around the city building. And I, I believe those things, right? But it is up to the new mayor to appoint whoever he decides is the best. It doesn't really matter if he did, he altered it back.
Uh, just to, okay, yes, let's go.
You know, reading the codes, we're, we're learning my new colleagues. We're the new ones, council people, we're going to, and we are the new ones. But um, we're going through the training and everything and um, it, it serves me that the I'm not sure we're understanding that uh, you know, mayor being left and the, his appointees um enter term, right? And then uh, it, it's just a comparison to what happens at the federal law. Um, President Trump is not gonna keep uh the chief of staff or what have you from Biden's, right? So I don't understand the, the uh the idea of keeping someone who, the law, the laws um terminated in their contracts during time. We did great service here. I don't have anything personally against Mr. Gutman. Uh, I see him hello on the show, and that's great, but you know, we have a different mayor, different uh who has the legal right to appoint new people, but.
Okay, well, uh, well, let's kind of go uh back and forth. So let's go to, let's go ahead and go to Alderman Brown.
So, um, I know that there were quite a few concerns over the past weekends, um, when we found out that as a city, um, all the aldermen were currently being sued, including the new aldermen, were being sued by the current mayor. Um, but in our head, I know for many of us, what you call legacy aldermen, our ultimate goal is to one hundred percent keep us out of litigation. We do not want to see money going towards litigation, our tax money. And if we know something and now also your current mayor knows something, which he's not disclosing to you right now, that's going to happen in the future, I think it pertinent that we do not go to litigation over something that all of us already know is going to happen in the future. And we just let it, we vote on it because we've all received the same notice. Now, including the new mayor. He has not released that information out to you. And you guys want a transparency, the transparency is not there because it has litigation tied to it. You're welcome.
What are you moving?
Um, uh, uh, Alderman, I, like, let's keep it, uh, Alderman Meyer.
Uh, yeah, so two points. Uh, first to answer Alderman Sheen's uh question. Um, so I've been doing a lot of like listening over the last couple of weeks about like what's going on and really, you know, I'm, I'm always trying to figure out like, like, what's the root cause here? And from, at least in my impression, I think that uh Mister Gutman has done a fantastic job for the alderman. Um, even before I was sworn in, I was getting emails from him about things going on in Cornerstone Lakes. Uh, I was getting updates about like things going on my ward. And so I, I see it, like, I see exactly like, you know, why he's getting, you know, great performance reviews from the alderman. Um, but the, uh, the flip side of that is that businesses are trying to come into West Chicago. And when they approach the city, they, they meet a firewall. Um, so you should have all gotten a, a letter from uh, from the McCapes who run the Five Points haunted house. Um, when they tried to expand their business, uh, it was just a lot of no, no, no. And it's not just them, it's many other business uh owners around our area that have come to the city and said like, I'd like to bring a business to West Chicago. And they just get met with like, well, this is not the code, this is not the code, this is not the code. And instead of saying, this is not the code, but maybe we can bring it to city council and talk about it. Maybe we can, we can add something, maybe we can, we can uh amend our code to make you bringing your business here easier. That wasn't the answer. And if you talk about, talk to other business owners, they basically, there's kind of like this, this black sheet over West Chicago that says, don't even try to do business there because they're just a real pain. And that comes from the top. And so I know Mister Gutman has done a great job for the aldermen, but he hasn't done a great job for the businesses or the citizens.
So, um, to, to second what um, what uh, uh Alderman Avena Soto said, um, in answer to the question, what terrible things has Mister Gutman done? That's not the question. It is not, his contract didn't end because he did terrible things. It ended because that's what the law says. And you know, your, your question um, or the, the thing that you, your statement that um, you know, if you were on a job for twenty-seven years and then suddenly it was gone, that, that that would be a bad thing. Well, yes, any of us would be disappointed to lose a job. And I'm guessing that everyone who's in this room has probably lost a job at some point in their career. Uh, the difference is that most of you were not government appointees. And when you take a position as a government appointee, you understand that when the term of the administration who hires you runs out, then you very well may look be looking for another job. And if you, I, I was um with a bunch of mayors two weekends ago, um, eh, at a mayor's breakfast. And there's, there's a lot of different um towns that have new administrations right now. And that's just part of the process. That's, you know, if you go into a certain kind of job, um, you know, you, you, you have expectations which are dictated by the type of job that you are in. If you become a professional baseball player, you know that your career is not gonna last longer than about sixteen years probably. Um, you know, which might be a, a short career for uh, a, a manager at a factory or whatever, but that's just the uniqueness of the, of your profession. And a, a city administrator, their job is tied to the administration and they understand that. Um, secondly, who is paying for this? Well, of course, the people of West Chicago. Uh, that's the point, that we don't want the people of West Chicago to continue to be having, continue to have to be paying exorbitant amounts of money for uh a city administrator. Who. We're not here to talk about his record, but a city administrator who, who. Has been here for twenty seven years and is making a lot of money. And so that is. That is. That's the, that's the prerogative of the chief executive officer. If, if part of. A part of the agenda of the new mayor. Requires. Taking a different path, a different course. Then it is just. Common sense that. He or she needs the ability to. Pick a person to implement that vision. Who shares his or her vision. And that's why the law is written the way it is, so. He's not being, his job did not end because he did terrible things, it ended because that's what the law is. And, and the second thing, the concerns. Um, from Alderman Brown, that all the aldermen are being sued, that's the same kind of inflammatory. Speech that the Herald use. In, 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 in saying. In, in saying all the, you know, uh. Alderman Avena Soto, you're being sued by Daniel Bovey. That gives the impression. That I, Daniel Bovey. Am trying to get something uh monetarily. From uh, from Alderman Avena Soto. Uh, any, I mean, the word lawsuit. In common parlance. It has the connotation for people of demanding money. And that's what we all hear when we say, oh, I'm getting sued. Now, some of you have probably been sued. Probably none of you. Have received uh, have, have been served with a, a petition for. Uh, for declaratory judgment. That is a specific kind of lawsuit which asks a judge to declare declaratory. Who is right and what does the law actually say? And, and so we are, we are going through that process to ask as Alderman Smith. I think uh, poignantly pointed out, a higher authority to say. Tell us what to do here, tell us who's right. Because we have a disagreement that to this point. We've been unable to resolve, now at any point. That can be removed. And we have the power as the city council. To resolve it, move on. Yes, Alderman Meyer.
So um, I, 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 there, there's a couple of comments, uh, and I, I kind of agree with. The first time that any, anybody heard about this was through the Daily Herald. And so, yeah, inaccurate reporting or not, it would have been nice to have received like a clear explanation of what was going on. Before reading about it in the newspaper.
Agreed. Good, thank you. Yes.
Person who probably graduated high school, uh. Do your research. Find your point of view on different perspectives and different. Sources, maybe just one. Thank you.
Yeah, I um. Thought The Voice did a great, great job of uh, reporting on that. Yes, Alderman Sheehan.
So back to what I was talking about with Alderman Myers, um, just using the haunted house as an example. About change, because that's what I was hearing is change, but not what the change needs to be or what you would like, why you want him to change, why we're getting, you want to. Have him, get rid of him. The haunted house, it also involved the fire department. Because you have people walking in dark areas, they want two floors, so we don't want anybody to get hurt or the firemen, or if there's anything going on in there for. Our service people to get hurt, um, so it sounds like the change you want is less ordinances to change the ordinances to make it unsafe.
That was not at all what I was. I'm looking for like, and, and, and I, I didn't say anything about permitting or fire or anything like that. It was merely, it's merely the impression that businesses get when they come into West Chicago. And it's, it starts from the very first time that they, they come in and they start asking questions. And that is, I come in and I say, I would like to build a business that does X. And the answer is, our code doesn't allow that. The answer that I would like to see us get to is, our code doesn't allow for that, but. Let me take it up with the mayor, let's take it up with city council, maybe we can amend the code to find some way to work. Together to bring more business to West Chicago. And that comes from the city administrator and the city administrator is appointed by the mayor and the mayor is appointed by the people. And so the only way that the people have any influence on this, on this entire chain of events is to elect a new mayor.
Alderman Hall.
In response to uh, Alderman Myers who said. Those things come before us quite often, we have to look at everything involved. Number one, you know, a lot of people get upset about city ordinances. But ordinances are designed for two things, number one, safety for people on the building or whatever. And secondly, for people nearby, and a lot of times when people request. An expansion of a parking lot or something like this building, we have to also take into consideration. What is, how is it gonna affect as far as the ground and stuff like that? Uh, water retention, you name it, there's a lot of things that go. And sometimes these come before us, so they don't get kicked out right away. They can get bounced back two or three times till we reach an answer. So it's not as simple as you might think it is that. They're all getting rejected and sometimes some of these businesses. I wouldn't want them in this town, to be honest with you, we've had requests for some of those things. So it's not like we just sit here and say, oh, no, we don't want that, no, we don't want that. That's not how we do things here and over a period of time, you're gonna learn. That there's sometimes some decisions you have to make are not easy. This is not an easy job many times. And we take into consideration everybody in this community, not just a select few or some of those things. That have, have been said in the past. I've been on here for twelve years and I'll tell you something. It's been an honor, but a lot of times it's been very frustrating. And this is not another piece of it right here what we're going through. But I mean, it, when people tell you things like that, you need to come back and, and examine and talk to some of the rest of us. And you may find out it's not exactly the way you've heard it. And believe me, I've had things fed to me over a period of time, some of them I believe, and then I found out they were wrong. And I'll tell you what, I have respect for everybody here, even if I disagree with them. But that said. Be careful what you're saying and what you're getting from people, because it's not always the right thing. When it comes to making a choice. And your number one choice is how this, this is, does this affect the whole community? Not just the ward you live in. Yes, you gotta represent your ward, because you gotta think of everybody in this community when you vote on something. And does, how does it affect? What does it cost in the future? And what's the future hold for it? So be careful with all these people telling you this and that, what have you. And one other thing, and I'm not accusing anybody here. But I'll tell you something, a lie gets way around the earth before the truth ever finds out of it. So think about that in the future, if I might ask.
Thank you, Alderman Hall. Um, we're gonna, I, I wanna, I wanna get to um, the item that Alderman Demus. Uh, has, has been wanted to talk through, so um, let's move the discussion. To discussing the basic rules of city council meetings. Proceeding in conformance with city councils. Uh, custom and practice, and I just want to acknowledge first of all that. I know that you had put it on there, uh, or you had requested for a vote on this. But until we got to the meeting, like, we didn't have any specifics or any. Um, uh, you know, any exhibits to read. And so I didn't want to put it on as a vote without, without actually having something that we could, and that the public. Could read ahead of time in the agenda, but I, I don't think there's any problems. From an open meetings act standpoint in us discussing it. And um. One of the, one of the reasons why um, usually the exhibits have to be submitted ahead of time to be on the agenda is because it gets distributed to the public. And so what we have uh, tonight. They don't have this because we haven't given them access to it. Uh, which is why we can't vote on it. But um, but we can discuss it, so uh. Alderman Demus, I'm gonna give you the floor and um, you can, you can start the discussion on this.
Yeah, no, I was just trying to get uh clarification on, um, you know. As far as, um, I know the first meeting that we had did not go well, um, to say the least. Um, and I think that had a lot to do with uh, city council meeting proceedings. That were not done in conformance uh, with city council custom and or practice. Um, so I, I mean, those, that's one of the first and foremost issues that. Uh, obviously is um. What has been a dividing uh, part of our council here. Uh, as we have seen it. Um, you know, all meeting notices, uh, I, I mean, I could read this if you want, but. Um, there are copies out there on the desk over there if you wanted to see it, but um. You know, it, it involves a majority of the forum, the city councilor committee, uh, as the case may be. Uh, and be properly noticed, uh, in accordance with the requirements of Illinois Open Meetings Act. And uh, one of the things I, I noticed at our um, last meeting was. Uh, there was some um, challenges of being recognized and then once recognized. Um, there was a failure to let um, whoever was recognized to finish speaking. It's to me, um, that just felt. Uh, inherently wrong, and I know I discussed this with you, and so um. Once again, I, I found that to be so here again tonight, um, so that was a little disturbing. Um. Special meetings can be called by the mayor. Uh, or any three aldermen upon written notice to the members of the council. Um, you know, unavailability of or of uh, special meaning notices and agendas shall comply with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Um, and what, once again, uh, that was discussed, I discussed that with you as far as uh, meeting with. Any more than three aldermen at one particular time. Uh, which I believe Alderman Brown had brought up earlier about you putting together four aldermen that would violate. The Open Meetings Act, um, anyway, going ahead. Um, meeting agendas uh, shall be properly posted at uh, the meeting notice. Um, city hall council agendas are established by the mayor with the input of the city council. Upon a request from any three aldermen, uh, which I formally did give to you. Um, ahead of time for the amended agenda. Um, it's a request items on the meeting agenda and um, it was also notified. Um, in insurance of the paperwork and information all available to the council. Uh, to make an informed decision, um. If the mayor or staff refuses to include uh, or post a notice of items requested to be placed on the agenda, any alderman can cause. The creation and posting of a corrected agenda, which is what uh, we have done. Um, which is included on, on the front doors of the building here. Um, which is also in conformance with the Open Meetings Act. Um. The presiding official, which the mayor is the presiding official of all city meetings of both regular and special. Uh, but in the mayor's absence, obviously a designated mayor pro tempore shall preside over the meetings. And shall have the same authority to conduct the meeting, which is um, just a basic statement of fact.
Ask a clarifying question.
Yes.
Um. Did you write this or where did this come from?
No, I did not write it, I got it from council.
What, what, where is, where is it? Like, what's the origin or the source of?
This was a practice and custom that's been used by the city council since we've been representing them.
But where, where, where would I find it? Is, is it, was it passed by the council at some point or? Um, who wrote it?
There was the council's procedures that we've had since I have been on here since about twenty years.
But was it formally adopted somewhere?
So this was simply memorializing the custom and policy.
When was this?
I don't have the exact date, I don't, I don't know.
Okay, all right, thank you, it would be, it would be helpful. To me, I, I would love to know if this was actually adopted officially in some way, because I, I hear you saying it's. Custom in practice, um, but we are, we are a nation of codified law. That um, that, you know, that the, the ordinances and resolutions that we have passed. Uh, are the things that we go by, not just dictate or someone saying this is what. I've done or this is what we've done in the past, so it would be helpful to know where this comes from, I'll let you continue.
Okay, um, so then uh. On to uh, action on agenda items, any and all items uh, or actions appearing on the meeting agenda shall be acted upon by the city council. At the meeting in which they, uh, the item has been properly placed on the agenda. Upon a unanimous consensus from the city council, matters can be removed from the agenda. Uh, matters not receiving unanimous consensus can only be removed from the agenda upon a motion. To table with a second and a majority vote. Um, which I would, you know, go back to their meeting on May fifth. Um, it's near the mayor or any individual alderman or minority of aldermen shall be authorized to remove any agenda item. Um, which is back at our last meeting, uh, which was done. Uh, and then recognition of city council members. Uh, I think uh, that's, that was pretty much um, the recognizing of the. City council and allowing them to speak um, on whatever matter they were recognized to speak on. Uh, refusal to act on agenda items. Um, if the mayor uh, refuses to act on properly noticed agenda items. Which have been otherwise properly removed from the agenda or table, any alderman should have the right to make a motion in support of. Or an opposition of the subject agenda item. And any other alderman shall have the right to second that motion. Uh, the mayor shall call for a discussion on the item and following the second. Of the discussion shall call for a vote. Um, which did not happen earlier. Uh, if the mayor refuses to recognize the motion or the second of the motion or refuses to call the matter, the alderman shall have the right. To vote on the matter by identifying themselves and verbally voicing their vote. Either in support of or in opposition to, which you caught us off from doing that earlier. Uh, the result of the vote shall be deemed official action of the city council and shall be treated consistent with the council action. And then uh, finally, um. The amendment of procedures, these procedures can be amended from time to time. But a majority of the city council upon action taken in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. And so um, I just wanted to present that to you. Um, I find that several things were violated either at our May fifth meeting and here tonight. And um, I just, I want to work with this council, I want everything to go smoothly and I am in agreement with Alderman Morano. We're not looking to keep Michael Gutman here forever and in perpetuity, um, he has um. Done a great, wonderful job for our city um, in the past. And I also would feel that it would be a better transition. If Mr. Gutman were allowed to stay on to help with that transition. Um, because he is very knowledgeable of the goings on of the city, so that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a, a couple of responses. Again, uh, it's all very interesting, but if unless it's been actually formally adopted, it is, you know. It, it's not anything that's, that's binding, what is clearly binding, because our city ordinance. Um, uh, makes it so, is that we follow Robert's rule of order. And so, I, no, no, thank you, thank you, Mr. But. And so, so. So, so I, I.
If not.
So. Um, you know, uh, last meeting, when I pulled an item off the agenda. Uh, I did so because. Clear, the, because of the, the, the clear guidance of Robert's rule. Um, which. Says. That an agenda provided in advance for information. In some organizations is customary to send e- each member, it is, excuse me. It is customary to send each member in advance of a meeting in order of business or agenda. With some indication of the matters to be considered under each heading. That's what, that's what we do. Um, such an agenda is often provided for information only. And with no intention or practice of submitting it for adoption. Unless, and this is the key part. Unless a pre-circulated agenda is formally adopted at the session to which it applies. So you can't adopt it in the previous meeting, in the previous session, you have to adopt it in that session. It is not binding as to detail or order of consideration. And so I was faced with a, being put in a box which you guys placed me in. Where. I was asked to preside. Over a decision to do something which clearly broke Illinois statute. And West Chicago city ordinance, it's, it's been quoted by people in the. In, in, in the audience, it's been quoted by members up here that. The, the appointment of the city administrator cannot extend. Past the. The, the, the end of term of the mayor. Who appointed said administrator. And, and that's black and white. And so, I mean, we can, we can like play games and like. Use Robert's rule of order against each other to do procedural. You know. Shenanigans and maybe I win this time and maybe you win this, this time, I have no interest in doing that. The, the, the central question remains. Are we willing to work together respecting both branches? Of our municipal governments? That, is, is anyone here seriously arguing? That the mayor does not have a role in choosing his or her administrator? And, and so how can you with, with straight faces and clear consciences? How can you put that on the agenda? How can you shackle the new administration? With an administrator which it did not choose and had zero input in. And so the only reason number nine was on there. Was. Because you wanted to choose the city, some of you. Excuse me, some of you wanted to choose the city administrator without any input of the mayor. And the newly elected, yet very respected and competent council members. For the Efta said that they've been called new newly elected too often, and I agree. They have just as much a voice as anyone else. So. You put that on there, which was a clear violation of law. And, 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 you know, Mr. Hallett had some, some good things to say about. The, just the difficulty of governing and.
It was Alderman Hallett, or?
I apologize again, that's my fault. So Alderman Hallett. And I apologize, was not.
Accepted.
Not intended, thank you. And I will also accept an apology from you.
Apologized.
Thank you. So. We. You, you had some really good things to say about just the, the, the needs, I mean, the, the purpose of local government. Is to protect the rights of the government. And. You know, when we have ordinances, when we have city codes, whatever. It is, it is, it is to protect the safety of our residents and it is to ensure that the rights. Of one resident are not violated by another resident in the pursuit of their rights. And sometimes it gets tricky because we have all these competing desires, different people. Who are trying to exercise their rights and feel like they should be able to exercise those rights. And, and we have to. We can't always make everybody happy, that is clear. But at the end of the day. We are a society governed by codified law, not by dictates. I cannot say this is so because I say it is so. We only have authority in as much as it is given to us by the codified law. Now, Robert's rule of order, I mean, this is kind of way down the, the, way down the, the food chain of, of codified law. But it, it is, it is specified that our meetings are to be run by Robert's rule of order. But we, we have to, we have to, we have to follow our municipal code, we have to follow state statutes. And, and. Like, sure, let's, let's have, let's have a discussion, if this is what we want to adopt, let's adopt it. But we can't just say we have to do it because that's what we did in the past, let's have a real discussion. And if these are the things that we want to dictate, and I use the wrong word, that we want to govern our, our, our meetings. Then let's, let's formally adopt it, that, that's, that's a great idea. But we can't just say this is, this is what happened in the past and so we have to do it. We have to come back to, to our written law. And that is the, that is the hypocrisy that, that. I am feeling in this discussion. Where I am being accused of. I am being accused of improper behavior. In using Robert's rule of order to basically control the meeting. And, and I will, I will grant, I, I will grant that. You know, I probably made some mistakes and, and, and that's, that's, we can have a discussion about that. You can chastise me if you want. But you guys are doing something illegal and I was trying to keep you from doing that. And that, that's, that's state statute, that's, that's city ordinance. Can we, can we at least agree that the mayor? Gets to appoint the city administrator? Some of you have agreed to that, but some of you refuse to. And, and so if we cannot agree to that, then the only option we have is to go to the courts and ask them to decide it for us. And these are the people that are gonna suffer, who's gonna pay for that? The residents of West Chicago, which includes the fifteen of us, but. It's every one of the twenty-five thousand plus residents of West Chicago. You, you, you say that Mr. Gutman. Should be kept because he did a great job and that. Your primary concern is to keep us out of litigation. Mr. Gutman may have done many wonderful things, but he did not keep us out of litigation. He brought us into all kinds of litigation and, and, and settlements out of court. And, and, and so, you know. We don't have to go to litigation on this, we just need seven of you. To say. We just need seven of you to say, yes, we are going to. We're going to reach a compromise and like, we're not even asking you to vote on it tonight, we're just asking. For a framework for a compromise to be put on the agenda for next time. And then for all of you, and I know what it feels like to be ignored. I know what it feels like to really want to be recognized. I know what it feels like to want to speak to someone and to be ignored. And four of you have to this day refused to have any meeting with me. And, and, and so. You can clap, but no booing, please, okay, I, I can't, I can't enforce that, but I'm asking you. Please don't vote, only clap, alright? So, because we're trying to, we're trying to get somewhere and I don't want anybody feeling more frustrated because they're feeling like they're attacked. So. I, 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 I see, and I see the hands, I see the hands, but like.
Can we please proceed with business instead of listening? Please, so we can all, we've already agreed that we listen and share with the public.
So, so. We can, under, under one condition. We can, under one condition, that you stop. Trying to. Unilaterally force me to accept Michael Gutman, it's just not your decision. If you will stop doing that, we can move on to other things. What about Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Same thing, so that was point.
That was point three.
If you're talking about like, okay, we are over Mr. Goodman's.
Yes.
But what about Mr. Bones?
Yes, Mr. Bond as well, his, 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 his role has ended. I, I declared a vacancy. And, and the reason that I did not take a vote on that last week was because I was not. I was not enacting anything. I was making it, there, there are times when the, when the. Presiding officer of the meeting. Recognizes something and they make a declaration of what the law says, one example. If a bunch of people left without saying anything and all of a sudden I realized that we no longer have a quorum in the room. I would make a declaration that we no longer have a quorum. It would be out of order for me to take a vote on it, it's just I am declaring this is what the law says. And so that is, that is what happened. And so, yes, in answer to your question, Mr., sorry, I apologize. Alderman of Inasoto. In answer to your question, yes, that, that was, in those, in those five points that I ran through. One of them was that the, that was that the city administrator. And the, and the corporate council, thank you. Would. Be approved by the city council, I am not trying to do it without you, you are trying to do it without me. And that's the important distinction that we need to understand here, yes, I am, I am holding the floor. Because you continue relentlessly trying to do. Something without me, without the new mem, any of the new members' inputs. And so, yes, I am, I am, I am holding the floor and it is no fun for me. It is annoying to you and these people, I don't know how they stand it, they're, they're, they're still here after several hours. Thank you for caring so much about your community. But, again, it, if, if, if that is the only thing that you guys will be willing to do. Is to push me aside. And say, we are keeping Mr. Gutman and we are keeping Mr. Bond, then we will, we will be stuck doing this. I'm gonna take Mr. Hallett and then we'll come to the other side. You just keep, you just keep recommending me and I'll get it right then.
One thing about your seven people, that would not be enough, there's fourteen of us here, you would need eight people to pass anything.
I'm the eighth vote.
No, not in that, you're not. That's only if the council here is a tie vote, that's what your vote is. And you're not gonna argue with me on that, I've studied that for a long time, I'm just telling you that, I'm not trying to be mean to you.
Let me just, see if I understand what you're saying.
You've had only seven people here, your vote doesn't work in that, you have to have. You have to have at least eight people in this council to have a quorum. You could not conduct a vote on that.
That, that, that wasn't what I was saying.
You did, you said if there were seven people to vote on something, it would pass.
We just need seven people in this body of fifteen, we need seven people to vote. Yes, and then I would be the tiebreaker.
No, that wouldn't be, how would that be yes? You're saying seven people voted against? Maybe, because I thought you were talking you'd have seven people in here.
No, 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 I'm saying.
Please be more clear in your explanations.
We can all.
Guys like me.
I, I apologize that I was unclear, but I, I was not contemplating a, an event where we only have. Seven council members.
You wouldn't even have a forum, you couldn't have a council.
Agreed, you are completely right and I agree with you on that, Alderman Helen. So what I was contemplating and what I was imprecisely saying, but am now rephrasing in a more precise way. Is in this meeting. With fourteen aldermen and one mayor, we would just need seven aldermen to vote yes. Okay, in next, next meeting, because we can't vote on this, we're just discussing. Well, I don't think you're listening right now, so we would only need seven people to vote yes. Which would put us into a tie and I'm trying to be extra precise here. And then the mayor would break that tie and would in that situation become the eighth vote.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Let's go, okay. Ms. Brown. I, I need to, I need to have the attorney slap me every time I do that, until I learn.
I don't get offended by it, but it is Mrs. I would just like, to reiterate, we brought this to just discuss amongst all of us. Yet we've all been listening to one person, can we please go on, move on to the next order of business so we can close out our meeting? Anyone second?
I'd like to, I'd like to recognize Alderman Demus if we can do that, and then I, I'd certainly be amenable to, to moving it along.
I just, I just wanted to say that in your statement earlier, I, I do agree with me, or agree with you, I agree with you. But I do agree with you that you do have the right to appoint the new city administrator and whoever.
Okay.
But it's with the advice and consent of the council.
Right.
So I just wanted to make that a clarification, okay? That's all, I just wanted to make.
I one hundred percent agree with that statement, thank you. Okay, so, thank you for the discussion of the, the procedures.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Alderman Smith was second, all in favor? I think, I, all opposed? We adjourned, so.